Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, May 19th, 2025. Roll call, please.
He doesn't swear everybody in. Mr. Shipley? Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For housekeeping to start off the evening, we need to elect a Planning Commission Chairman. Nominations?
You.
Second. Anyone else? Then through acclamation, I will accept and continue as Chairman. Thank you. Vice Chairman, nominations?
Steve, are you in again?
I'll do it again.
All right.
As long as you don't leave when there's... Thank you, Jen.
Sorry. Anyone else?
Second.
Second. Through acclamation, then Steve will continue as a Vice Chair. Thank you very much. The unfinished business, the first item is the lotswood consolidation, 9385 Shepherd Road. If the applicant could please come forward and overview a presentation again of what you're looking for this evening.
Our attorney is running late. We were kind of waiting on him.
It's okay, Bob. Is he giving the presentation this evening or were you or he here for just in case?
No, he was going to give the presentation.
Good luck.
I mean, we gave the presentation at the last meeting.
Okay. Well, we could... We can go right to the regular meeting, do the approval of public participation and then come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was going to recommend. If we move the public participation up, we'll do that. And then your attorney is on his way, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Should be here hopefully in a few minutes and then we'll be able to transition into that.
Well, then, gentlemen, I guess you can have a seat for the moment. Thank you. First item on the regular meeting agenda is the approval of the January 27th, 2025 minutes. Any comments or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, they'll be accepted and submitted. Next is the minutes for the April 21st, 2025 meeting. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, those will be accepted and submitted as well. Public participation, the opportunity for members of the community to address Planning Commission. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone, your name, address, and there should be a sign-in sheet that you could fill out if you have not done so already.
Thank you. Dear Planning Committee...
Name and address, please.
It's kind of in my thing.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for being here tonight to hear our concerns of Twinsburg residents. My name is Dr. Patricia Stoddard Dare. I live at 9546 Andrew Drive in Twinsburg. I have been a resident of Twinsburg for nearly 18 years. I'm going to outline for you tonight reasons why the City Planning Commission should reject the proposed lot split. Firstly, the zoning frontage as outlined in the proposed lot split is outrageously detached from the 75-foot frontage requirement for R4 lots outlined in Section 143.09. Please look at the proposed map and notice the tilt at the back of the proposed driveway easement. This is supposed to meet the frontage, the lot frontage requirement. This part right here that's slanted and this part right here that's slanted, that's the 75 feet. According to the Code 1129.12, a front lot line is defined as "the boundary of a lot which abuts a private or private right-of-way." This lot frontage does not appear to abut a private, a public right-of-way because the driveway is "owned by the upfront property owner." It looks like the supposed frontage line is at a 45-degree angle, not facing the street. The frontage line is facing the neighbor's backyard. This is in violation of the required frontage of 75 feet for R4 property as stated in 113.02A of the Twinsburg Residential Zone Dimensional Standards. Last time, we heard the city planner weigh in on her assessment of this lot split. However importantly, we're here tonight because the City Planning Commission has an important role in determining if this lot configuration meets the standards outlined in the code. The proposed lot split is a substantial deviation which undermines the zoning code's intent to maintain consistent lot widths which are crucial for preserving neighborhood character and ensuring adequate access and frontage. Importantly, the Twinsburg Planning and Zoning Code does not explicitly state that an easement can be used to satisfy the frontage zoning requirement. The Twinsburg zoning requires, regulations require lots to have proper street frontage to ensure public access, emergency response accessibility, and utility service provision. In this case, the developers are attempting to circumvent frontage requirements by creating access easements which do not align with the intent of the zoning regulations. The Planning Commission has the authority to evaluate whether such easements comply with the zoning standards or if they undermine the purpose of the frontage regulations. I urge the Twinsburg Planning Commission to reject the lot split on the grounds that there's not a true 75-foot frontage represented in this proposal and reject the idea that these laughable easements sufficiently meets the standard. Lack of sufficient frontage was one of multiple reasons why the BZA rejected the previous plan. Accepting the proposed plan would be a violation of the intent behind the city's zoning regulations. The R4 zoning district is designed to maintain uniformity in residential development, ensuring that the lots conform to establish standards for width, depth, and frontage. The proposed flag lot undermines the intent of these regulations by introducing irregularity, irregularly shaped parcels that do not align with the district's planning goals. In practical terms, the proposed lots do not meet the required lot depth-to-width ratio. Section 1187.07B1E limits lot depth to no more than 3.5 times the lot width. This regulation aims to prevent disproportionately deep and narrow lots, which can lead to insufficient land use and potential access issues. Originally, the zoning commission rejected the proposed parcel A and D, which are the back lots. Those proposed lots had a depth that were more than 3.5 times their lot width. The new lot split proposal functionally has the exact same issues of having the need for a very long driveway in order to access the back lots. The easement technically assigns part of the long driveway to the front property owner. Of interest, for the purpose of the length-to-width calculation, the front driveway is claimed by the front property owners. However, for the frontage requirements, the driveway is claimed by the rear property owner. This approach is contrary to the intent of the zoning code and undermines the purpose of the frontage requirement and does not resolve concerns about public access, utility service provision, and emergency response accessibility. It also does not fix the water infiltration concerns posed by a long driveway. The Twinsburg zoning code provides minimum standards. Section 1103.81, general interpretation, states that the provisions of the code shall be considered minimum requirements and shall be construed to further its underlying purpose and objectives. Both parts of the preceding sentence are relevant. The Planning Commission has the right to place additional conditions on property developers and the code "shall" be construed to further its underlying purpose and objectives, not "may be construed," "shall be construed" to further its underlying purpose and objectives. The underlying purpose and objectives are outlined under Section 1101.02, which is the stated intent of the code, which reads, quote, "The intent of the City of Twinsburg zoning code is adopted for the following purposes: protecting the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city; maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in the city; preserving and enhancing environmental quality; assuring compatibility of uses and practices with zoning in districts; facilitating the economic provision of public utilities and services; and establishing design standards for adequate public streets, roads, and highways necessary for adequate levels of service." Unquote. So we know what the intent is. So the first part of the intent of the code has to do with protecting health and safety. Flag lots rely on long, narrow driveways for access, which can create traffic congestion and visibility and access issues for emergency responders. The proposed lots would require extended driveways, potentially leading to bottlenecks and restricted access for fire trucks, ambulances, and other emergency vehicles, as well as for postal and delivery drivers. At what point would fire and police have a chance to comment on the proposed lot split? Would feedback be received too late if the lot split proposal is reached today, is accepted today? The purpose of the code is in part to protect emergency services from this type of situation. Another important safety issue exists with this plan. Directly adjacent to the proposed easement, which would have to be the location of the rear property's driveway, is a swing set. I'm concerned about the safety of the children who play in that area if a long driveway is directly adjacent to this play space. In the winter, a car could veer off the long driveway into the play space on the adjacent property. And I will show you a picture of what that looks like. So where the tree line is, is where they would put the road, the driveway. This is just feet away from a swing set. Number two under the intent of the code has to do with potential negative impact on neighborhood character and infrastructure. The introduction of multiple flag lots in a predominantly standard lot neighborhood can disrupt the established character and cohesion of the area. Flag lots often lead to increased density, potential traffic congestion on narrow accessways, and challenges providing municipal services. Moreover, the unconventional lot shape and access arrangements may affect property values and the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood. Infrastructure constraint strain is also a concern. The creation of multiple flag lots could place additional strain on municipal services, including water, sewer, and road maintenance, and the unconventional lot shapes may lead, may complicate utility connection, leading to higher costs for both the city and the adjacent property owners. There is also a likely negative impact on property values. Flag lots disrupt the aesthetic, the aesthetic and functional cohesion of a neighborhood, potentially and likely lowering property values for adjacent homeowners. The irregular lot shapes and non-standard access points may deter and will likely deter future buyers, affecting the overall desirability of the area. It was unreasonable for me as a property owner to anticipate or imagine a flag lot was going to be permitted in my backyard. It reduces my property value to have a long driveway adjacent to my property. There is also environmental drainage concerns. The long, narrow driveways require flag lots, required for flag lots increases the impermeable surface areas, leading to higher runoff and potential flooding issues. The city must consider whether the proposed development adheres to storm water management requirements. Many homeowners have already talked at length to multiple city officials about our concerns about the added water infiltration to our property if the plan is approved. In addition, many Lake Plata property owners have spoke out against the proposal in the past at zoning meetings and also at planning meetings, and seven letters were submitted to the, by residents of Lake Plata. And there was also a letter from the Lake Plata HOA, which represents 144 households. So there's widespread number of people who reject this proposal and are urging you to reject this proposal. Finally, there's also a concern regarding the precedent this lot split would set for future non-conforming developments. Approving these flag lots sets a dangerous precedent, encouraging other developers to circumvent zoning regulations through easements and variances. This could lead to widespread noncompliance, making it harder for the city to enforce zoning laws in the future. Consistent enforcement of zoning regulations is essential to maintain orderly development and uphold the integrity of the city's planning objectives. So in conclusion, the proposed flag lot at 9385 Shepherd Road fails to meet multiple zoning requirements, including lot width, depth, and frontage regulations, poses safety risks, infrastructure challenges, potential property devaluation, while also setting a precedent for future zoning circumventions. As stated in my initial point, there is nowhere in the zoning code that says an easement meets the requirement for the frontage requirement. The Planning Commission has the option to reject the lot split on this grounds. 1103.02 states, "In the event of any requirements or regulatory provisions of this code are not found to be consistent with one another, the more restrictive or greater requirement shall be deemed in each case to be applicable." I urge the Planning Commission to reject the proposal to preserve neighborhood integrity and uphold zoning standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak regarding this? You're the applicant, so you'll have the opportunity to speak.
There isn't. Yeah, it's not.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Joe Dupre. I live at 9554 Andrew Drive.
Yes.
And I'm opposed to the lot split as well. I second everything Patty said. Okay. I'm here more to gain a better understanding of the Planning Commission as well, and I might share some things and ask some questions if that's okay?
Well, really, we're not here to answer specifically back to you. We're here to hear your comments and thoughts, and then we'll have general discussion after we have input from the applicant, as well as discussions with the city planner and the attorney.
Okay. Well, I had a chance to review the prior meetings with the Planning Commission and the BZA. And at the very last Planning Commission meeting, a question was asked by Mr. Walker that wasn't answered in that meeting. It just got interrupted. One of his questions was, has the owners contacted the residents in this community about their plan? And it was, it was not answered. And I was curious, Mr. Walker, as to why you would ask such a question.
I think in any application, not just this one, that it's something to be considered. Now, it's not necessarily required in code, and I've got our lawyer who can tell me if I'm wrong on that. It is something I prefer to ask in some cases. Because, I mean, to be honest, and I can't think of any codes that I'm familiar with where that, and this is putting on my old lawyer hat, but no, I used to be a maritime lawyer and a military prosecutor, so don't, you know, take my knowledge of planning law is limited. I'm not familiar where there's any code that actually requests it. But to the points that Dr. Stoddard Dare addressed in her opening and the prior version of the code before the new code came in, which I've been a very, very big fan, to me, when it goes to questions of consistency. But I also think too, if, I grew up in the country, and if you move into a neighborhood and you're wanting to do something, I think it's good to get to know your neighbors. It's the old Kentucky boy in me. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Proceed.
I was curious. You know, I was looking over mytwinsburg.com with the, with the various documents that are out there, including the Planning Commission's introduction, purpose, and mission, which you guys are probably obviously well familiar with. It says, "The Planning Commission plays a pivotal role in shaping the growth and development of the City of Twinsburg, composed of dedicated residents who volunteer their time and expertise." Thank you. "The Commission is tasked with reviewing and evaluating land use and development proposals to ensure they align with the city's vision and regulations." So, Stoddard Dare talked about some of the regulations in the code. I'm more curious in the vision component. It seems like there's two components, a vision, and then you have the regulations. I would think the regulations work off of the vision. So can one of you explain to me what vision means from a Planning Commission decision
Anyone want to jump in on that? Or do you want, why don't you finish? I mean, there could be a whole discussion and debate on that, on that topic, as to what the vision is. The vision, the way I see it, is trying to create a better Twinsburg, looking at the things that the city has put together in our plan for development of the city, looking at what the community and applicants who come into the city want to do, and trying to just create something that we see, and we have different opinions. That's why there's different, you know, that's why we have a variety of people who serve, trying to shape really what is good for planning for the City of Twinsburg.
Okay. And I'm just going to continue to read through the...
By the way, we do have things that help guide us in doing that. We have a comprehensive plan that's put together and other groups and committees that are involved in the city as well, who provide input depending on what's being proposed and being developed.
Gotcha. Actually, I saw that there was a link to the comprehensive plan as, as sort of almost like the source of how the vision and the regulations come into play. In fact, I would just maybe like to read a portion of the comprehensive plan that talks about that.
A portion?
Yes, just a portion. It says, "The comprehensive plan is the official document setting forth major policies related to the future development of the community. The plan articulates the location extent of residential business and industrial land uses, community facilities, and thoroughfares. The relationships between all of these elements are based on the community's estimated needs over a period of years." Dot, 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 dot. "To be fully effective, the comprehensive plan must be sensitive to the wishes and needs of Twinsburg citizens and to the requirements of a changing environment. It must represent the thought and dedicated work of both officials and citizens. Keeping the comprehensive plan current is an ongoing task." And I just want to connect the citizens. We mentioned, you know, the neighbors that are adjacent to this property that wants to be developed, but also the HOA. There's a significant amount of households affected by this proposed lot split. And, you know, my representation of one of those citizens is that we should be heard. It's, it's, you know, again, I'm not going to repeat everything Mr. Stoddard Dare shared, but we have some major concerns, and I know you guys do too. You've asked a lot of questions through the past, past two or three meetings with this group. Not only current concerns, but future concerns for those that might take ownership of those flag lots. They came out of your mouths. You're rolling the dice. Be caution what you ask for. Those were words right out of the last meeting. Mr. Shebeck. In fact, at one point early in the meeting, it says, you had mentioned that I will not approve this early on in that meeting. So you've got concerns.
We truly have.
Major concerns as well. And I just want to express that, that I'm against this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Charleston Flumphy, and I live at 1487 Jennifer Drive, Twinsburg, Ohio. I am directly in the back of the proposed change that's coming. I did a little research on the sale of the property, and I found that in talking with the previous owner, that there were originally two parcels and a third parcel that was a one acre, that was a one-acre parcel that was, split the two parcels. And then at the time that he, that his mother passed away and he was going to sell the vacant parcel, which he did, that that did not include the one-acre parcel that is supposedly part of the 4.5 acres that, that the developer contends that it belongs to. If you look at the auditor site, you will see that each one of their parcels describes that one-acre parcel. So that one-acre parcel can't be owned by two different people or can't be part of two different parcels, I do not believe. This is merely a site on my part. So I think that the first thing that has to, one of the first things that has to be looked at is if that parcel is not part of what they consider to be the four and a half acres, that would negate the four parcel split and all, and not, and negate the flag lot theory. So that's, I just wanted to bring that to the attention at this point because I think that would be, make an impact on what a final decision would be on planning, because that would change the whole demographic of what they're already planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak at this time? Well, obviously, I have lots of questions and comments that have come up based on what was discussed, but before we do that, I think we need to give the applicant an opportunity to come forward and present what you're looking for and address any of the comments. Unfortunately, you didn't hear all of them, but you probably have an idea as what, what it is. So a name and address and an overview of your presentation for this evening, please.
Hi, I'm Attorney Al Schrader. I'm with Rodrick Linton &amp; Belfance. The address is 50 South Main Street, Akron, Ohio. I'm one of the principals in that firm. I understand there's been a number of different meetings with this body, and first off, I want to thank you for your service for, to the community. I was a township trustee and elected official for 28 years. I was on county council for about a year and a half, so I know that what you do is very difficult and what you do is very important, and we appreciate your time and consideration. First off, we have a deed to our property, and that's what we've asked, the ability to do a lot split on. So there's no question we own the property. We represented that to you when the application was filed. We have a copy of the deed here if you need to see it. There's no question that we have ownership of that property. It's apparently been raised, something has been raised for the first time tonight. Didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but we own the property. Second, as we're speaking about property, one of the concerns that government has is that people have a right to own property in our country, and they have a right to develop property in our country. What we have to do is develop it in accordance with your rules and regulations. And we have met personally and by phone with your planning people to make sure that we understood your code and that we complied with your code. We believe we do. We would ask you to certainly ask your law director and your planner whether or not what we've done meets your code. We believe it does. And if it does, you have an obligation to approve it. And the difficulty is, I believe you approved a very similar thing a little while ago, a few years back. So absent a serious reason to turn this down, we believe you ought to approve it. If we meet your code, then this ought to be approved. And if it isn't, then there's a real question as to whether we are in fact honoring people's property rights. I'm here more to answer questions if you actually have any. I believe it's been discussed quite a bit. It was a nice day out there, so I'm sure all of us would like to get home and, and relax a little bit, but if you have some questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. I think there's going to be a variety of discussion going, going on. I'm going to start with, I don't believe in the thing of setting... going, going on. I'm going to start with, I don't believe in the thing of setting precedent because every situation has unique circumstances to it, and one, something is approved for one thing doesn't automatically mean it should be accepted for the next unless they were typically identical, and that usually doesn't, doesn't happen. So setting precedent to me, I, I personally don't, don't go with that. As far as the comment made about the property and the number of acreage that was raised, we have a lot split with legal descriptions that are done by a registered engineer surveyor. Therefore, based on that information, we have to believe that the land is what it is and what it's represented to be, that there isn't being double dipped by any acreage for two parcels. If that was the case, the legal descriptions wouldn't match up and it, it wouldn't work. So we have to assume that, that that is not an issue. I know I wasn't at the last meeting, and I apologize that I had a conflict in schedule, but in reading the minutes and having discussions, I understood a lot of that meeting had to do with the concern about stormwater management and how this was going to affect the adjoining neighbors. What is being presented tonight or has been presented for the lot split really doesn't address that issue because they're not here to develop the parcel. They're only here to get the lot split. When they come forward and they're ready to develop the property, they would have to address those issues. They will have to address those issues, and they'll have to address them to meet the standards that, that are, that are, the city has that would be reviewed and approved by the city engineering department. So if they do get the lot split, it's not like that's it. They're done. There's still a lot more work that they have to do, including that. Plus, I saw nothing in this package about easements for utilities to those back properties. The easements that I see in place are just egress and access easements, nothing related to utilities. So that's something that they would have to work on also. However, there was a lot of things brought up by the residents tonight beyond the stormwater management aspect, and I hadn't heard those issues prior to tonight. So I have to go to you, Matt, and Lynn, as they address the planning and zoning. As far as width depth frontage, you know, do, do those items as presented meet our zoning code?
They do. The, the lot width to depth question that was raised is for a lot in a major subdivision, or a lot split or minor subdivision that, that lot to, that width to depth requirement is just not part of that type of development site, because typically you have a scenario like the one in front of you this evening where you have a residual piece of land and it doesn't involve construction of a new street. And so the, the lot width to depth typically can't be met just by the nature of it. So, so that, that's not something that is a nonconformance in the situation.
Yeah. That, yeah, that right, the three and a half times the lot width regulation, that applies to major subdivisions.
Okay, so that-
This to, for the board's advocacy tonight, the lot split, which is the only question before the planning commission, is the lot split. The lot split is a minor subdivision. And that's why when Lynn and I say, you know, this is a regulation for a major subdivision, that'd be a different category of lot split, not the category that's before you tonight.
Yeah, and it's by intent. It's on purpose, just by the nature of these lot splits on a sort of collector-type roadway. The issue of the frontage, we allow for the frontage to be taken from a private right-of-way, and that's what we have here, an easement is a private right-of-way.
Yeah, the easement will create the private-
Right-of-way. The, the vision in the comp plan is for residential uses at this location, and the R4 zoning allows for the density and lot size that is proposed. The engineer has reviewed the layout and has approved the driveway locations in terms of appropriate access location. There's not a requirement for an owner in this scenario to contact adjacent property owners or residents. That's, those are the notes I have. Is there something I missed?
No, well, just another question, though, just related to something. I, I know, again, typically this happens when we're reviewing the developed part of when they would come back as opposed to just the lot split, but I'll ask it since it was something that was brought up, is has there been any discussion or review of this by the police department or fire department for safety purposes or access purposes? Again, understanding that they haven't submitted the development. It is only a lot split.
Yeah. Yeah, there's been no comments really in opposition to this from safety forces.
But have, have they-
Yeah.
Have they had, okay. And then again, I know when it comes time to develop that they're usually more, even more involved with that.
Correct.
But, okay. Ed, comments or questions?
A lot of the questions were asked and answered.
Steve?
Well, you touched on it. I was going to bring that up. So you're talking about an access easement, but you're also going to be a utility easement, because the utility's going to have to go down with the access easements. So you have the two easements. Just way I'm reading this. I know I'm not a legal expert, but access easement says grants the right to cross some person's property, raise your own, especially come for landlocked properties. Utility easements allow utility companies like water companies access to property for infrastructure maintenance, repairs, power lines, and water. So do we not need a utility access to get water and-
Well, actually, they're both, to, to answer your question. As you know, if this were a public road, that's usually where you see your telephone poles and your utilities. This is a private access, and that same access would therefore be where the, we would expect the utilities would come in at. Now, there'll be more detail presented, as the chair mentioned, when we get a little further down the road. But what we're here tonight for is the lot split, and the utilities you can expect will be on that private road or easement or whatever you want to call it.
I, I think, Philip, you're going to need to present legal documents creating the easement for utility-
And we will.
Utility purposes. Utility companies are going on a utility access.
Right. And we'll present those documents at the appropriate time.
When you develop.
But as you probably pointed out, that's step two.
Right.
The, and I can tell you, even though it's too early and we're not at step two, that we'll do whatever Summit Soil and Water or the other authorities require with regard to drainage. And we appreciate that. And to answer the question about contacting neighbors, I, I always, for 40 years now, have felt that these hearings are where we do get some input from the neighbors and find out what they're thinking. If I have to address that, the reality is they got to drainage problem now before we do a thing on that property. So it's not like our property has caused it.
Understood, Counselor. I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to make sure that we understand very level, that's not any argument that I've made at the beginning. I think it's been established and discussion with regard to this property that there are drainage issues at Lake Platte, and I believe the baseline when it comes to stormwater is thou shalt not make it worse than whatever state that it is.
That's correct.
So I want to make sure that we're, we're even, even keeled on that, sir.
No, we're on the same page there, and I'm assuring you, we ain't going to make it any worse. Hopefully, we don't, we're not sure we can say it'll make it better, though, because we don't think their problem is caused by our property.
Well, better's not the legal standard. I'll be the first to estimate it is thou shalt not make it worse.
Right. And I can tell you, that commandment, we will follow. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so, go ahead, Steve.
I just, I said it before, if I were to purchase one of these front lots and then find out that I have to pay taxes on the property that my neighbor's using to access the lot behind me, plus, I don't think there's any waiver or liabilities on that. So they're basically crossing my property, and I'm liable for them being on my property. I just think it's a bad plan. When you can legally develop this lot for three lots with no variances, and we'd be totally done. But you're trying to sandwich in four lots, and I just, I think it's ridiculous. I think it's a bad plan. And that's just my, whether it's legal or not, that's just my, my personal feeling. End of note.
All right. Thank you. Michael?
I have nothing else. I do appreciate the opportunity to consult with, with the law director between last meeting and this one.
Scott? Any comments or questions?
I do, actually. As the ranking representative of City Council, I'm the son of a developer. My dad put me and my sister through school, buying land and developing life. I can't think of a single time in his 40-plus-year career that development is ruffling somebody's feathers somewhere along the line. Mr. Van, if you don't mind asking this question, does this plan this evening satisfy the city's requirements legally to have a recommendation for this lot split?
Definitely put me on the spot there, but what I will say, what I will say is, the city planner's reviewed it and has opined, I think numerous times now, that the minor subdivision lot split that's before this commission does meet the code requirements. I have reviewed the city planner's work, and I have not identified any issues with that. And so that's a long way of going. At, at this point, it's the city's position that the application before you does check the boxes that are necessary for a minor subdivision lot split. Now, in the end, it's the planning commission's decision, but, you know, but yes, a long way around. Yes, I, yes, I do believe that the application meets the requirements.
So, I mean, everybody wants to talk about property owners' rights and the ability to develop and so on and so forth. Certainly, the people that came up and spoke freely this evening from Lake Platte absolutely have rights, as do the applicants here this evening. Mr. Cohen, you've mentioned several times, this is about the lot split and legality thereof. Whether you like it or dislike it, I think it meets the requirements. I, I can't tell anybody how to vote, but I think that, you know, I think this is something that the applicants have already. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, any other information that you want to provide, planning commission regarding this application?
Nothing else.
Matt, anything else that you would?
I guess one last thing. I think it was sufficiently handled, but just in case any of the members of the commission have any follow-up questions, Lynn and I did look into the property ownership. The applicant did bring the deed. I think there, I think the one acre issue, at least from the best that Lynn and I could come up with, is an issue with how the property cards are being read by some of our residents. And it looks like, when you read them, that there's one acre residual sitting out there, but that is actually a function of how the property cards are created in Summit County, at least based on Lynn's experience, that you have a listing of two separate acreages, one always being one acre, and then the second listing is the balance of land that makes up that parcel. But I wanted to go back to that one because I think it's important for the commission to hear. The transfer was of a certain parcel ID within Summit County. It was purchased by the applicant, and the applicant has the deed for that same four acre and some changed parcel if you'd like to review it. But that is something that Lynn and I were alerted to by our residents here, and we did investigate that, and we found no errors or oddities or anything of the sort.
Thank you. I'm just going to say it one more time here before I make my motion that lots would only, a lot of work down the line if this should get approved tonight as it relates to easements, stormwater management, and, and anything else that will be part of the review and approval process by planning commission and, and the city departments going forward. Any closing comments or anything else you'd like to share at this time?
No, thank you for listening to us. My dad was a rubber worker, and we both benefited from the fact they put us through school. So that was a good thing. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll sit down then and-
Thank you, sir.
-hear from- I'll let you have the opportunity to come back up and make one final comment here, and if need be, you'll have the opportunity.
The only thing I'd like to understand is that nothing can, nothing can happen to those, once this is approved, if it should be approved tonight, that nothing can happen to those parcels as they sit right now until something is presented again in another form. Is that right? So you couldn't bring in a bulldozer to tear down trees?
I know.
That goes to what Mr. Walker said about-
This isn't a building permit. So that, yeah, I think I get your question.
Yeah.
This is not a permit that's going to authorize the building. It's not a zoning permit.
Well, the only reason I mention-
It is purely a lot split approval for the-
The only reason I mention that is because originally there was a house on, on the property, and that was torn down. I don't know. You know, one day we saw a bulldozer there, and the next day we didn't see a house. So I didn't know if that's something that had to go through the, the planning commission at that time.
It went through architectural review, Brian.
Okay. Thank you. That, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
I appreciated what you were saying about the requirement for the width to depth requirement. I was confused because I was looking at the paperwork from the original variance request, and it was saying that it needed a variance that required that, width to depth variance. So that's where we got the impression that, that was necessary. I also wanted to say that when this came, this proposal came, I've heard people say things like, you previously approved this. That's not my understanding. My understanding is that there was a conditional approval based on certain conditions. Those conditions were not met. And the conditions that were put on it previously have still not been met, as far as my understanding goes. I also, what, what Ms. Muter was saying regarding the, the frontage, she said that the city allows, allows for it, but that doesn't mean that it must allow for it, to allow the easement to count as frontage. There's a difference between it's allowed and it must be allowed. I still would contest and say, and advocate that just because it can be allowed does not mean that it should be allowed, or that you don't have the right as the planning commission to disallow that. Also, in terms of emergency services, she had said that police and emergency services didn't make any comments in opposition. My question is, did they make any comments in favor of this plan? Because we have a whole set of codes set up where they might not even know that this is under consideration. So it's framed as if they didn't make any opposition comments, but did they make any comments in favor? And then I, I'll just quote, my main question is, does the planning commission have to accept the, the easement in consideration of the lot frontage? And my read of it is that they do not. They do not have to accept that. And I would advocate that they should not accept it because it's ridiculous. It's, it's ridiculous because the purpose and the spirit of it is to have a certain amount of frontage to, to give access to the property. And if you look at how tiny it is in actuality, because again, we have to go back to that picture, that silly, silly picture of the lot split, uh-huh, can't bring it up right now, where it's just a, it's a real, it's even more narrow for the majority of this lot frontage. It's only here that it's 75. So this is a 45-degree angle. What does that mean? Does that mean that it could be a 75-degree angle? I mean, like, how, how, how far could you take this where it would still be acceptable and be considered frontage? So I, I advocate strongly that this is an appropriate frontage and that this is not in the spirit of, of the code for the city, and that it will do, it will do harm to us as property owners. You know, because this part right here, all those trees are right by the swing set. That's all going to, this is where the driveway is. That's where the driveway is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For the board's understanding, the definition of front lot line in the code is the boundary of a lot which abuts a public or private right-of-way. A right-of-way easement on a private parcel is a private right-of-way. You do not have the discretion to change the definition of lot line in our code.
Thank you. Final comment?
Yeah, I just want to-
Yeah, I just want to continue on the intent, vision, concept. What we, what I heard again in the last meeting, the functionality of what's been done by this easement was truly to grant the permission to have, to pass the code. It's clearly it was a workaround. Simply, that's what it did. The words out of the mouths of the commission here was, "The functionality did not change." The purpose, there's going to be a driveway that's going to continue on past that easement. I mean, it's just, it is ridiculous to some degree that we can have these workarounds to appease a code. Go back to intent, spirit, vision. What was the vision of our city in this comprehensive plan is to give quality of life, right? Quality of life of us as citizens. And I just don't see how this lot split and its, you know, and its impact on, you know, all the neighbors will have. It's just, again, intent, spirit. It's part of what I read and the planning commission's role is to evaluate in addition to regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any final comments that you'd like to make regarding this? If you do, you need to come up to the microphone, please, so that it can get recorded for that steering.
Let me be brief. People have property rights, and I've probably never been to a zoning hearing where some of the neighbors weren't too happy that somebody wanted to develop something next door, no matter how they wanted to develop it. It's our nature as human beings to be happy with the way things are, hopefully. And that's a credit to your community. But the reality is, the landowner has property rights, and our requirement is to follow your code. We've done that. Your planner said we followed it. Your law director essentially said we followed it. So, we believe you should approve this at this very early stage. All we're doing is a lot split. There'll be, as the chairman said, a lot more to be done later, and we intend to meet all the commandments later. So, with all respect, we would ask that you approve this. Lawyers always get to be pretty unpopular because sometimes we say we might sue somebody, and we don't want to have to do that. The reality is, we met your code. This matter should be approved. We can avoid that kind of thing by simply approving it and moving it down the road. If we screw up somehow in the future, that's an additional issue that you address that. But right now, we meet everything in your code, and therefore, we respectfully request that you approve this proposal. It's only the lot split. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm going to make a motion here in a moment, and I'm going to preface it with this by saying, to me, this is a black and white issue for what we're doing, and it's pretty straightforward as to what I see has to happen. But even saying that, I find this to be a very difficult decision in what it is with everything that we've heard. But with that, I'm going to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative along with the submitted lot split survey for 9385 Shepherd Road, permanent parcel number 64-01251, date stamped received April 1st, 2025, I move that planning commission approve the requested lot split with the following condition: Final approval of the easements by the city planner and law director. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
It's a 2-2, requires a majority, therefore, the application is not approved. Any comments for them moving forward? You can have discussions with the city planner and law director tomorrow, I guess, discussing this, defeated at a 2-2. All right, moving on, communications and miscellaneous. Scott, anything to- Sure. Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Steve?
Are they moving forward with the parcel development up by the Cleveland Clinic for the trailer storage?
They are.
I see a lot of them.
Yeah, they are. They submitted a slight revision to the retaining wall feature. So, yeah, they're moving forward.
See if they stockpile some dirt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
Michael?
I'm going to make a motion to excuse Craig when we come to it. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Lynn, what do we see on the horizon?
I think we should have a site plan for our June meeting. So, I would, I would say it's having a meeting in June.
Are you able to share for what?
The, the-
Just a site plan.
The Ravenna Road site that you reviewed for rezoning, the old Blue Top site. I think they'll be in front of us for conditional use permit for storage units, at least on the portion of the property that is appropriately zoned at this time.
Could you call Blue Top Storage?
Yeah.
So, that would be, it's on June 16th. All right, anything else?
That's it.
You have anything else to share?
Nope.
That's it. A motion to excuse Craig this evening?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Then, again, thanks for another year of leading you wild guys. Thank you. And Steve, thank you for, I'll try not to go away when the big discussion, when the big meeting's going on, so.
Craig's wife's retiring tonight, so he's out of school.
Ah, okay, understandable. So, we'll say German 7/29.